Okay, thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to Monday, February 8, 2016. It is 4:30 and we will call to order the work session. As we look around the table, we have one council, oh, we have two council members missing at this point. I heard that Councilman Stip will not be until around 5:15. I do not know about Councilman Campbell.
He's arriving now.
Oh, sorry. Just on your cue, I just announced, you can take a bow. All right. We have two items on the agenda tonight, so let's start at 3.1. Representatives from Arizona Department of Transportation will provide an update to Mayor and Council regarding the construction of Phase 2 of the state route 303, 303L. So where are we going this? With Michael first, Rigby, ADOT engineer, or yourself? Rebecca, I'm sorry, I'm taking it away from you again. Rebecca Zoop will introduce the presenter. Brock Barnhart, ADOT Assistant Communication Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're very pleased to be here this afternoon to share with you some updates about Phase 2 of the Loop 303 project, which extends from the existing interchange at I-10 down just past Van Buren. Before we do that, I am going to introduce Brock Barnhart, who's going to present tonight, but we also have a number of other guests here with us. We have Gabby Kemp, who is also from ADOT, she works with Brock. In addition, Michael Rigby, he's the project engineer for this Phase 2 piece, so we'll be seeing a lot of him. And then Kurt Slagel, who is the design representative from Aztec Engineering. And then finally, we have Ian Schontz with Police Construction, who is the contracted contractor on this project. So with that, I am going to hand it over to Brock.
Right, thank you.
Mayor Council, thanks for the opportunity to share some information with you this evening. Before I did, I wanted to just celebrate a success that we had in partnership on Phase 1 of the interchange. The team actually won what is known as the Grand Award for 2015 Engineering Excellence through ACEC, which is the American Council of Engineering Companies of Arizona, so I wanted to just announce that, that it's been a great partnership on Phase 1. We look forward to another great partnership delivering Phase 2 down to Van Buren. But at the end, perhaps we could present this to you, it's yours to keep, but wanted to present this to the city. I'll go ahead and get started, we just went through the introductions again. I'm the Assistant Communication Director for ADOT. Gabby Kemp will be my staff member on this project throughout its duration. She'll be kind of attending the construction meetings and likely be the face of this project. You'll see her often to give updates and she'll be interacting with the community and the business community on the project. I want to just go very high level. Again, this is Phase 2, so Phase 1 was constructing what you see out there today, those connections or ramps that go to northbound 303 and the frontage roads. The objective of this project is to make those connections to the south. So that'll include the northbound Loop 303 ramp connecting into westbound I-10, so that's the one coming from Cotton Lane up north and then connecting, heading towards California. The next addition to the ramp would be the westbound ramp from I-10 connecting to southbound Cotton Lane, so that'd be coming from Phoenix towards LA or California and then proceeding south into Cotton Lane or the future 303. There'll be some modifications to the Van Buren Street traffic interchange, so we will be building a traffic interchange at Van Buren as a part of this project as well. And then we will be applying the rubberized asphalt from Phase 1 as a part of this project. We'll be applying rubberized asphalt of fall of this year, 2016, in the September timeframe as a part of this project as well. So we've been fortunate enough to have the contracting team. We talked about that rubberized asphalt being applied in 2018, we were able to adjust that and get it done sooner than later, so I really appreciate the contracting team making that happen for us.
Thank you.
Adjusting the phasing so we can get that down on the ground this fall. Really wanted to kick off that type of partnership that I talked about early on, and we're going to be working hand in hand with your staff, just like we did during Phase 1. We're going to be creating project fact sheets, we're going to be leveraging resources such as the InFocus magazine to reach out to your public to get the information in their hands. We're working with your Neighborhood Service Department as well, trying to get information into the HOAs so we can kind of saturate it with information from that respect. We'll be out there doing business walks in coordination with your Economic Development Department, making sure we have the businesses covered for the project, and then providing regular updates for you as council throughout the project as well. We'll be also doing traditional media, social media, having information posted and updated on our website, and then we'll be looking for other opportunities such as events, any other strategies the city might deem to be valuable to keep the information out there in front of the public and keeping the public informed and the business community informed throughout the project. So the presentation itself is very short, but what I wanted to do is cover just the high-level elements of the project and then allow for additional time for questions.
All right.
I'm going to go ahead and leave this information up. This is how the public can engage with us throughout this project. It is the website address as well as our hotline number, so I'm going to keep this up as we have further discussion.
Oh, Councilmember Zell.
Just a question for staff, will this be on our website as well? This contact information?
Go ahead. Oh, you didn't quite get that, sorry.
I wanted to cover very-
Sometimes we're a little slow, okay.
Yeah, Mayor Council, I wanted to-
What you're looking for now is response from us, and so who would like to be the response responder?
Sorry.
Polly?
I took this off of the website, I can't read it. So can y'all give us a copy that we can actually read what all of these marks are? And I can see McDowell Road, and then after that, I'm totally lost. Is it my eyes?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, I want to turn back to this diagram, and this is the current diagram that we have on our recent fact sheet.
Well, I have that and I can read that.
Yeah, that's what's going out to the public. It's actually going to be a mailer that we're mailing to a specific area here within the project limits, so we kind of need to simplify it a bit. The graphic that you have in your hand is more of a technical drawing, more of what you would see in a plan set for the project, but we want to really simplify what that looks like for the public. And that's where my presentation, I wanted to focus very high level on the elements, the ramp construction, Van Buren, and then leave it open for discussion.
Was there a historic area that we were worried about and that's why we didn't go forward, or was that a structure?
That's not part of this project, it's to the project to the south, taking 303-
Further south than where we're going, and we're only going to Van Buren.
Correct. We're only going to Van Buren as a part of this project.
Okay, and then when we get to Van Buren, is it just going to stop?
There will be an end of freeway condition at Van Buren, so essentially traffic would exit the ramps at Van Buren to either go east or west, left or right, but essentially the freeway would end at Van Buren Street at this time.
Okay, Van Buren and Cotton.
Correct. Essentially, Van Buren to I-10 is really the scope of this project. It's taking where 303 is currently ended near, just south of Thomas, it's taking 303 further south underneath I-10 up to Van Buren Street.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Okay, so let's talk a little bit about timing again, date-wise, for the, I know some of it's still a little up in the air, but phasing a little bit, but also any road closure issues, and I know that you've mentioned business walks. Now granted, it's stopping at Van Buren, but back to, you know, what we've seen in the past, and I appreciate, you know, saying business walks is huge because it's calling attention to the issue, but can you dive a little deeper into, you know, how you're looking at that? I mean, obviously, we don't want to tell businesses, road closures are coming the week before. I mean, let's, you know, work this out communication-wise, so can you-
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne, let me kind of walk through kind of some of the first elements of construction. So in purple on the map that you may have in front of you, the focus is going to be on Van Buren Street. We have to set up a detour, so on the first page, we set up a detour at McDowell. We had to do kind of a little half-football-shaped detour so we could build the bridge structure at McDowell. The same thing's going to occur at Van Buren, that'll be one of the first things you see. Cotton Lane to the north and to the south will remain open, bridge construction at Van Buren will be kind of off to the side. There will be a time when they have to make that transition of closing down the existing and putting back on the new, so there'll be perhaps a weekend closure to make that transition, but that would be the only closure. So Cotton Lane stays open both northbound and southbound as a part of that work. Now, to make some of the ramp connections, they'll be working north of I-10, so the westbound frontage road, essentially making that movement from westbound to southbound, they'll have to close the westbound frontage road, and motorists would essentially from I-10 would get off at Saraville, they could go up to McDowell and across and then down Cotton Lane, or they could proceed south on Saraville to go west on Van Buren Street to make that connection.
Oh, boy, that's-
You said the magic word. You said the magic word.
That was the next one, Saraville's a big deal.
So Cotton Lane stays open, but the motoring public will have the opportunity to use McDowell, and we can encourage that if that's the city's preference. To do the northwest ramp connection, essentially from Cotton Lane to north to the west, they'll also need to close the eastbound frontage road, which means traffic would essentially have to use Citrus. They could again use McDowell, or they could drop down to Van Buren Street to make their connection back to Cotton Lane.
Well, I can tell you that Saraville has been really a problem for our residents, and we know, we've been trying to let them know that we still have this next hurdle to get over, but their patience is worn thin, and so we have to really be delicate with this and as best possible to help keep it off, at least especially southbound Saraville. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, southbound has been really the biggest issue, right Rebecca? It's northbound is not as difficult getting to McDowell and over, but southbound has been tough, and go ahead.
Right, that is correct, Councilmember Osborne. It's the section of Saraville from Portland, so just south of I-10 down to Van Buren, and that is the portion that we do have in this year's CIP. We anticipate and will be coordinating with ADOT on this and have been already, that we will be doing our construction from on or about June 1 through approximately October 1st. And so we'll coordinate with any closures and rerouting of drivers northbound. If there's a time when Cotton is closed, we'll reroute to Estraya or to Citrus, so we will be very proactive in working on that with ultimately the urgency of getting Saraville completed.
Right, and just one last thing, I'm sorry. And I appreciate all this, I know in the long run, we're going to be thrilled that this is continuing, I know that will be in the best interest of the city, but during this meantime of all this, you know, safety obviously is first, but the thoughts of our residents on Saraville, that impact, and then the businesses, again, getting, hitting and again there on Cotton Lane is really something that we have to be as proactive as possible. Thank you.
Is there a reason that we're doing the southern frontage road first? I mean, the, we're not doing this, the southern frontage road that comes around? Why are we doing one, why did one go before the other? Am I understanding this correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the question I have, because that's a difficult problem right now, right?
Yeah.
If anybody coming from our area can't get onto Cotton Lane, that direction, if I'm coming from San Diego or someplace, I can get on to Cotton Lane. So it's been a real strain on the commercial. So I guess my question is, how come, could we do that frontage road first?
There was a lot of consideration in terms of the phasing from a contractor's side and matching up or getting that rubberized asphalt down too. The reason we have to close the frontage roads is just overhead work will be occurring over those frontage roads, so for safety, we have to close those roads down, they're going to be setting bridge structures in place. And again, a lot of that is to facilitate traffic shifts on I-10 so we can apply the rubberized asphalt, so the team thought really hard about how to phase the project the best we could while meeting the objective of getting the rubber down, but also the safety elements, critical path items such as the bridge structures and so forth.
Thank you, I hadn't thought about the bridge structure overhead, saves a lot of cars-
I guess that's kind of important.
Yeah, it's kind of important. Councilwoman Lortano?
I have a question, when we're routing the traffic, is there anything we can do, because like what Joanne was saying, it's kind of a concern, and Rebecca knows all about that Saraville, that we can have the truck traffic go up McDowell or go up Citrus, is there any way that we can hopefully lower any of that traffic? Is that something that's possible?
Well, and we can certainly work with our traffic group and with PD to see if there's any type of signage we can add to direct people on a truck route, we can certainly look into that.
That's huge.
I think that would help out a little bit. And then my other question was, so when we're doing Cotton, or when you're doing the 303 to Van Buren, it's going to, Cotton is going to, you're still going to be able to get to the 303 from the south, or just to get on it, you're still going to have to go around, or how's that going to work?
So the preliminary work that I talked about, the ramps and the work at Van Buren, will last about a year, and then you'll see that open up and then you'll see a closure of Cotton Lane, and essentially, traffic will use what was currently restricted as access to get back to Cotton Lane.
Oh, I mean to get to the 303 from the south, so for the first year, you'll be able to go under how it's got that stoplight and turn left and then turn right? You'll still be able to do that until you get to that portion? It won't be cut off from Cotton at that, for the first year?
I guess I'm not understanding, so 303, right now terminates right just south of Thomas, so people needing to make the connection further south will get off at Thomas, use that system and break-
No, you're the wrong side. I'm talking, I'm coming like from the target, because we have a community up-
Heading north, okay.
In Estraya, so I'm coming down Cotton Lane, so if I want to hit the 303 now, I take Cotton and then I stop at a stoplight, I make like a left and then I make a right to go around and pick it up. Is that still going to be a way to access it for the first year while you're doing some of the preliminary work, or will those residents have to either go to Saraville, which is another concern, or up to Citrus?
During the preliminary work, Cotton remains open north and south.
Okay, so it gives us a little-
From about a year from now, Cotton will close, those elements will reopen, and that's when we would want to come before you to talk about and get the community prepared for that next element.
Okay, yeah, because I, same thing, I don't want more traffic having to be funneled on to Saraville, and that would probably be the route that the people south of the freeway would take, because that's kind of closer, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Molly.
So have you had any conversations with the Cotton Lane RV park?
Not as, not yet, we're actually going to be hitting the streets and pounding the pavement, doing our business walks and having those one-on-one discussions with the businesses here very soon.
I think you need to let them know, because those big rigs, if they're used to coming, you know, we have a lot of winter visitors, because that park generally is totally sold out for the winter, and those big rigs coming in year after year, they know exactly how to get in and exactly how to get out. So it'll be really important, especially for us, for as a city, that we have signage far enough down the road to let them know they can't use the same Cotton Lane offering when we close that up, or however you're going to get them in, and if it's a restricted roadway, then we've got to unrestrict it for these people that have these big RVs that are trying to get into that park, because I don't want to do anything to damage their business, if at all possible, because they're far enough out that they don't really have an issue, but they could if we shut those roads down.
Thank you.
And maybe we could, you know, maybe ADOT can do a really big outreach to the auto clubs and Good Sam and those clubs to let those folks know, because they do periodically blast to all of their members to let them know, hey, if you're traveling on Interstate 10 and you're going to the Cotton RV, we'll park, this road is closed and you have to exit at this or that, that might help. I mean, it's easy to do, because when we owned a motorhome, we got a blast all the time from all the states that told us where not to go or where to park. So I just want that on your radar, because it's not something I don't think that y'all would have thought of.
That's a great suggestion, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I just on the city part, Rebecca, just tell me alternative roads, because I think, okay, I think of, okay, I think of Australia to Yuma.
Mm-mm, yeah.
I think of Bullard to Yuma. I think of all those areas which give some relief, and how do you, how does one control that? Because it sounds like a very difficult decision to make.
I, thank you, Mayor. I don't know if the word "control," but utilize excellent signage to help direct drivers appropriately, so that they can make decisions well in advance. And again, that comes from all of the reach-out that we're going to do, and maybe having a link on our website that directs you right to the ADOT website, but ultimately, making sure that we have good signage well in advance to tell the driver, if you need to go northbound, I'll just give an example, northbound on Cotton, you'll need to exit at Van Buren. If you're intending to go eastbound, go to Estraya Parkway to access I-10. If you're going westbound, go to Citrus. So things of that nature to where we can really get in front of it, so that the driver really doesn't even have to think, that they're simply reacting to the signage.
Now, I'm assuming there's that social media you can do that through, what about manufacturing and warehousing companies in our city? So I, just tell me, yeah, just tell me how you do that and how you get the pass-throughs, you know, how you get to the pass-throughs.
Sure, absolutely, so we have in the past interacted with economic development, because they have good contacts with Amazon, so that we can make sure that they're aware of the work that's being done both by ADOT and by the city during that timeframe, and really encourage them to utilize the other roadways. And we could even do that, create an exhibit to provide them information, so again, they can hand it out to their drivers, so that as soon as they leave the building, their area, they know exactly where to go.
And do we, do we have a schedule, or do we know when the heavy truck time is opposed to none? Is there any period of time which is more palatable to be?
Because I don't think so.
I don't think so, I'm asking, but I am asking the question. You know, do we have any gauge of what that is, or it's just a mishmash of whatever schedules are?
I actually don't have the answer to that question, but we can look into it, because I would imagine that there would be sort of certain timeframes where we see the either influx or outbound truck traffic.
Okay, that information might be helpful for the residents, I don't know.
And Mayor, definitely be around the holiday season when we see a huge increase, but there are other times of year as well, that's when they really ramp up for their sales, so starting November and then even finishing up in January is what we have seen. But in addition to other times of the year as well, it'll ramp up.
All right, any other questions? No?
I think just keep us updated, let us know when you're hitting the businesses, when you're, you know, doing these outreaches, some plans you've come up with, even, you know, and I know even if we're looking at, if they were going a little further west, back to the truck issues, Jackrabbit, or, you know, I mean, how much for, you know, we keep pushing them into the city, but just a mile, yeah, well, I understand that, but truck-wise, truck-wise, you can get them on Jackrabbit too, so I'm just thinking, you know, looking at the whole circle of streets, I suppose, but, thank you.
Well, and lastly, Cheryl Lynn.
I may have been going to comment exactly how you were, I just wanted to thank ADOT, because I think that that relationship has grown stronger and stronger, and they have taken in consideration what our businesses, and I think that it's much appreciated, it's not taken for granted, so thank you.
And we do have spots of neighborhoods that are extremely upset, and I think that Rebecca knows those, and possibly a conversation between ADOT and Rebecca and preparing them for the dialogue that's going to be used, because they are fed up, let's put it that way. So we're working from fed up to trying to make it better, so it would be, it would be most helpful, so. Anything else?
Mayor, just if I may, so shovel in the ground, when are you expecting to actually start, because we've heard it's right around the corner.
Yeah, that's a good question, so the contractor has notice to proceed or can shovel in the ground February 22nd, if they so choose.
If they so choose?
Of this year.
This year.
Yeah.
It's a two-year project overall, so they can start February 22nd and approximately two-year project.
And it is good to hear, I know at MAG, and I know our staff that works at MAG, and all the other people have been pushing, because when you delayed it and then they moved it again, and now it's up again, and so it's been back and forth, we don't seem, we're not appreciative of it, but now it's on the docket, and we have some adjustment we're going to have to make in our city too, as well as ADOT is, so, but we're excited. It's nice to see that the West Valley is going to get an extension on 303, it says a lot, and it says a lot about all of our surrounding cities, why it's so important, so we're appreciative, okay? Anything else? That's it, thank you.
And who shall we present the award to?
The mayor.
The mayor?
All right.
Goes with the job. She gets all of the stuff and then she lets us see it.
I don't know Rebecca, is that box of cupcakes right there? The white, the little-
Oh, yeah, so you have the City of Goodyear behind you, sure, that's good. Yeah, see, we should have touched it as they walked by like they did at the Super Bowl, walking the trophy, you know? We could have all touched it.
It's all right, you can touch it twice, once for me and once for you.
Oh, no, 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 they just walked by with this big trophy and everybody was touching it, and it was just pretty cute.
Well, let me say that this is, the only really true work of the mayor is holding it at the moment, okay? This is a lot of staff in the audience that has been working on this an awfully long time, and city manager, and then council, you've been really proactive on this, so thank you very much, and so we'll put it in the trophy case for sure.
Wonderful.
But we'll need a picture for Twitter, if you don't mind. All right, thank you very much. All right, let's go to 3.2, and this is always a very fruitful discussion, on proposed Water Conservation Committee to obtain council guidance on the proposal. Public Works Director Javier, there we go again with the name, Sedovich, Water Resources Manager Mark Holmes, and Water Conservationist Special Sandra Rota will present.
Hello, everybody. Hi, Mayor Council, we're very grateful to have the opportunity to bring to you a proposed plan for establishing the Water Conservation Committee. Public Works staff under Sandra Rota's leadership have been working, developing a conservation master plan identifying short and long-term potential conservation measures, including those that look at residential, commercial, and municipal outside water use, and that is the key, outside water use, as an area where significant impact can be made. Although no radical measures are being discussed in the plan, some of these ideas are innovative and could potentially challenge our current vision of our cityscape for the future. Therefore, it is essential that all stakeholders participate in the development of the city's conservation strategies. This includes staff members and certainly our citizens through the Conservation Committee, which will ultimately make recommendations to council to be incorporated in the Conservation Master Plan. The Water Planning Committee recognized the need for citizen involvement in this effort and recommended the formation of the Water Conservation Committee. Water conservation was at one point was only seen as a state mandate and even as a feel-good initiative. The reality is that it has quickly become a tool that continues to make an impact in water use and therefore allowing for less water needed to support development in the future. The key is to have the conservation effort be predictable in a permanent strategy. Today, we're here in front of you, excited to share this information and get your input on the proposed committee. At this time, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Mark Holmes and Sandra Rota.
Thank you.
Before you start, I like the word that said "permanent." Thank you very much, that means that we're going to stick with this one and it's going to continue, so I'm pleased.
Mayor Lord, members of the council, thank you very much. Again, this is a proposal to discuss to establish a Water Conservation Committee and provide staff guidance. You probably recall seeing this pie chart on several work sessions. This is showing the total water use for the city's water service area broken out by the various water use classification. On the top right, we have single-family interior water use in the yellow, in the light green below, we have single-family outdoor 35%. To the left, we have irrigation 29%, it's commercial turf irrigation primarily. Above that, we have industrial 2, commercial at 9, municipal use at 6, construction at 1, and multifamily at 1. Just wanted to underscore the single-family outdoor and the irrigation are the two largest pieces of the outdoor water use. This is what we're recommending that the Water Conservation Committee, once established, would really focus their attention on is the outdoor water use for the entire service And you are well-versed at water conservation is well-characterized through city planning. From the 2025 general plan, this council strategic action plan, in fact, in the 2025 general plan recommends an objective towards a decrease of water consumption by 1% per year moving forward, based on gallons per capita per day or other metrics that are, can measure that. Second, develop and implement a water conservation master plan. And third, update the drought management plan in accordance with changes in the various city water supplies. Just some city master planning items to mention that also have water conservation is a water conservation master plan- that also will have water conservation is a water conservation master plan draft that is being completed at this time. This will be vetted through city staff and ultimately brought back to a Water Conservation Committee. The Integrated Water Master Plan, which will have several recommendations toward water conservation, is nearing completion, that we brought back to you very, be brought to you very soon. And also, working with ASU, we've finished a preliminary citywide tree plan, which looked at trees as the alternative to turf irrigation as part of a landscaping design. So, these will be brought forward to the Water Conservation, looked at some of these components as well. And again, just want to mention, the Water Planning Committee did recommend that a Water Conservation Committee be, be established.
And just to refresh, another piece of the context that's really important for water conservation is to look forward with our growth. We're expecting that we're going to see more buildings and more pavement in Goodyear. They'll replace areas that are currently irrigated agricultural land, and that will lead to an increase in temperatures, a heat island effect becoming more important in the Goodyear area as we grow. At the same time as we work to increase water efficiency in our outdoor setting, we need to be careful about that. The famous stereotype is that you put in rock, that's the zero scape. That's not what we're interested in. We're interested in maintaining a quality of life and being careful in managing how we balance. We can do that, and the Water Conservation Committee will be looking carefully at how we do that as we look at development guidelines for outdoor landscapes and ways we incorporate a tree and shade plan without requiring excessive amounts of water. These are both achievable at the same time. Conservation Committee will be well-aware of those and looking for the balance that we can accept. So, we'd like to get into some of the nuts and bolts of what we're proposing for Water Conservation Committee. These are items that you may have comments about in particular. We're looking at recruiting members for a committee through the end of April, so giving us a good two-month period of time to get the word out and have applications come in. I've already talked with Shereen about a communications plan to encourage people to apply. We will have a couple of different strategies underway. One is for the general membership, and then others for the industrial stakeholders that we'll talk about in a minute within the membership. So, we will use the social media platforms that are available to the city, as well as our print media, and then some specific outreach to targeted sub-audiences. We anticipate then, as we've had a couple of months, that'll bring us into the end of April and May for the actual selection by the council subcommittee that deals with that, with the committee being commissioned after appointment in June. That puts us into the next fiscal year to start. It's not necessarily the most attractive time to start. We're anticipating the committee will, will need two years of work to get themselves up to speed on what some of the kinds of things are that are options for conservation, and to be able to look into them fully, so that this committee would be finished with their work by June 30th, 2018, or 24 months after they actually start. This slide is a little bit busy, so let me summarize. What we're thinking of is a committee that would have up to 11 members plus two alternates. You saw in the slide describing water usage that the majority is coming from our residents. So, we would have this committee made up of a majority residential water rate payers. So, that would be members from across the city. The majority of that group would be water sewer payers for the City of Goodyear itself, but members from Liberty and Epcor could make up that difference. So, the majority of that group, we're showing a 60/40 break there, but that depends on how many members are on the committee, whether it's 11 or nine.
Joanne?
You, you just mentioned Liberty or Epcor, which I think is, is fabulous. They should be at the table during all of this. But I wonder if they really need to be a member? I mean, it seems like they should be at the table, because we would love to see what happens, you know, in South Goodyear. Maybe they take on some of it in North Goodyear, too. But I wonder if they, are you saying they should be a member, or they reface what you just said again? Maybe I just misunderstood.
Sure. And, and let me give you the rationale for including members who are from those areas. We're looking at including people who are rate payers that live in those areas, because as we said, some of those recommendations are going to deal with developmental guidelines, and those will affect the whole city, not just our water service area.
Okay. So, I was actually thinking someone from specifically from Liberty, the entity, or Epcor, the entity, as, as being part of this conversation, because, you know, I think it will hand-in-hand, you know, somewhat go together. So, I'm just throwing that out there, that it would be nice to see people that actually, you know, rate payer is one thing, and that's important, but the others that are actually making the things work at Liberty and Epcor that could hear what we're trying to do, make a difference also at the north end. So.
I appreciate that. And we have actually spoken with some of the staff members at both organizations already about the fact that we're moving ahead with this, so that they may wish to keep an eye on it.
I'm assuming the conversation would be there, because as soon as one city, one part of the city does something, then we get 1,000 questions from the other part of the city, and if we get them, then you know Liberty is going to get them, especially in my neighborhood, I know that will happen. So, yeah, I think that's a good, I like the idea to cooperation.
Right. So, that would be one part of the committee, is those who are representing the residences. And we're anticipating that would be a majority of the membership. However, the others would not be required to be residents of the, any of the water service areas. They could be representatives of businesses that are impacted by outdoor water use. So, we've listed several of those in the second part of that slide. Those might be representatives of the landscape industry who are designing outdoor landscapes for us, or those who are maintaining them for us, those that are designing master plan developments, those that are proposing master plan developments, because the outdoor water use is a major water use they are creating for us. And we want them to, but we want to make sure that's done in ways that are consistent for the future. And I guess we have a little asterisk on there. I should point out that we're thinking when we're talking about resident rate payers, that if there was a resident, if there was a rate payer who pays to the City of Goodyear, who actually doesn't live in incorporated Goodyear, they could, if they were interested, apply to be on the committee as well, with the same rationale in place.
Would they be using our water?
Yes. We have customers who are not within the city that do use our water. Not a very many of them, and I don't necessarily anticipate they would volunteer, but in the interest of being inclusive, we show them here.
So, we had a committee on the rates, right, water rates. Have we considered somebody representing in that group that would sit on this?
Actually, a couple of them spoke to me the night that you mentioned this at your presentation, so I'm sure as soon as the word goes out, they will.
I just think they bring another side to it, levity to it, because of what all they know, have learned during this process. So, good.
Mayor, will the selection be done by the committee or by?
Oh, no. We'll follow the usual process. It's a council-appointed committee, and you would have your subcommittee that appoints boards and commissions review the applications.
And then y'all would be the ones to tell us if they're all from one industry, or where they're coming from, rather than just their address.
Right. Their application has some of that information, but we'll make sure that we acquire it, so that it can be.
And so that you don't stack it with all the same people. For, if you're going to have 11, and six would be our rate payers, our residents of Goodyear that actually pay our fee that way, and then you have five open, and that could be whatever, you know, just so that we don't have all five from real estate, or all five from landscape.
Right. That would be the goal, is to get a.
If there's some way to indicate that on their application, that would help the committee, I'm sure.
Yes. There is a question, it's fairly open, about occupation, but we will certainly follow up until we have that information.
The goal is to have a broad spectrum from landowners, various commercial property, those kind of interests, absolutely.
Sure. Every voice needs to be heard. Joe?
First, I applaud your efforts, okay? As I had mentioned before, I think, first of all, water is one of our most, is, is our most valuable resource, and anything, anytime you can stretch that usage out, whether it has to do with the material we have around our city facilities, our parks, our design guidelines, where we keep our quality of life, but the same token, we have low-use water, water plants, so that we're not draining that water, you know, use and then spreading it out. Also, I guess one of the questions I have, and I know later on you look at some of your goals and objectives, do we ever look at leakage in our piping system to try to control some of that water? I'm seeing a shake of the head down there, because that may help also stretch out our resources when we plug those, you know, leaks as well, as we start to get in there. But again, I think not only it goes to the water use, but if we can find plants within our median, plants within our parks, plants that are low-growth, but also provide that quality of life, you know, the nice look, looking plants, flowers, et cetera, we also cut down on costs, because it's less time they have to be trimmed, safety issues, that's less time they got to be trimmed in the medium if they grow up too fast. So, you know, I think not only being able to stretch out our water usage, which to me is a great plus, which we have to do, right? Second of all, I think it also works its way down to being a little more efficient from the cost of maintenance and trimming and that type of thing. So, I think there's a lot of possibilities that come out of this water conservation plan, and I appreciate those efforts that you're doing on that.
So, could you just review, because we have had that policy where we send people out to check the, the underground irrigation, and just kind of, since he brought it up, just quickly talk about that. And both, both companies have done that, Goodyear has done, and Liberty. Yes. So, could just, so the people listening, their.
I mean, our distribution system, our water.
Right. The home irrigation checkup is a service that people can request if their usage is 150% of our average or more. And we go out to their house, we do a little bit of an interview about what they use inside, how many people are there, so we can estimate what's efficient usage for a household they have. Then we go outside and we measure their vegetation, and that establishes how much water would be used efficiently to maintain that landscape. We then compare this usage to what they have, and what we've seen in the way of how they're irrigating currently, how they're pruning currently, what their plant selections are, and make easy, low-hanging fruit suggestions about how they can save water, and identify for them how much they could save by being more efficient. Generally, my experience has been that we will identify to people that they can save between 40 and 70% of the water they use at their household by becoming more efficient outdoors. Generally, what people achieve within the next year is they reduce their overall usage by 20% if they wish to. So.
So, that's not a bad program to continue at the time, and to, and actually grow it a little bit more. Maybe the criteria for your visit is not, is quite as high as it is now, so you're doing a few more visits? I don't know. The other question I have, and I've talked about this before, when we talked about landscape, and we talked about grouping landscaping, and everybody looked at me like, "What? Why don't we do that?" Oh, but we did talk about it in threes, where you did a tree with a couple, and then you have a long space, so that you don't have those bushes that look like bullets now all down the street. So, my question to you is, so water usage on those trees are less than the water usage on those yards and yards of round circles? Is that true or not? Or you probably don't know, and I'm asking the wrong person?
It can be. It depends on how it's irrigated. But yes, it can be, because once the trees have developed their root system, they can get leftover water from everything that's anywhere close by, and they can essentially be plugged.
Okay. All right. Sherry?
I just have a general question, and maybe you all know that or not. After we get these really big rains, you know, I, you still see in parks and schools, water going off. Do we have the capability to, like, shut off, or do someone have to actually go to each individual park or something to shut off the irrigation for a period of time after some of those rains?
I would not be the person to answer for the city properties. I can say the HOAs don't generally.
Nathan's coming forth. Nathan, we appreciate this.
Mayor, Councilmember Lortano. Currently, we do not have that capability within our park systems or the right-of-ways. So, typically, it, it takes manual control to go in and shut down irrigation controllers. So, literally, in the right-of-ways, you're talking thousands of controllers that are shut down, and typically takes us about a day and a half to two to get to all the clocks. So, when we do receive, you know, decent amount of rain, that is our practice, to get around and shut those off for the next several weeks. However, in our, as we look to our asset replacement plan, and in the CIP, there is, we have some dollars in there where we will actually look to start converting our controllers to web-based systems that will allow us to shut the water off and control it instantaneously.
That's a great goal. That has to be a good way to save some water.
Save some man hours, too.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, of course.
And I don't know, might be for Nathan. This, when we had the Cookson Doors Tour, they had the sistrenes. The watershed, watershed. They had the rain. Yeah, they, they have sistrenes where they catch them, and they use them for the irrigation. And again, when you get, when we get these big downpours, you know, like up in the street, I just see all that water go.
This is the area where we won't be able to make good strides easily with the Water Conservation Committee making some suggestions about how we proceed. And in the conversations, that continuing internally with staff departments about how we can better make use of stormwater.
So, this could be something, a recommendation could come for something like that for private businesses that come here as, at our guidelines.
I'd love to hear how they've done.
Yeah, I would love to know more about that.
A good idea. Is there a way that we can do that through economic development? I know it can't be a deal-breaker, but that it talks about our environment and how important it is?
Mayor, members of the council, so one is, it would be good to find out how Cookson has really used it. I think, if I remember, it's seven or nine different sistrenes, and the amount of sheet runoff that they get off of their roof into those is amazing. So, just, we will get back with council, let you know how it's worked for them in, in the practice. I know it was kind of slow-going in the summer, but then as it started to ramp up again, I think it has been helpful. Mayor, specific to your point, is that something that if it comes out from the Water Conservation Committee to encourage sistrenes and the use of that with some of the industrials, it's certainly something we can look at? The balance is what's the cost of that?
Sure.
Is it onerous or not? And I do know that we can get some cost estimates from Cookson as far as what it costs him.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. So, we've already begun to mention some of the kinds of things the committee might be looking at, and the kinds of recommendations they might make. What we're asking is that the first step they take is to become familiar with the context for water use and conservation in the city. There are some legal requirements for conservation. They should be familiar with those, projections of the water supply, some of the information that's going to be coming to you in the IWMP will be relevant to them in looking at conservation. The purpose of conservation has a lot to do with what are the recommended measures. And so, for example, we hear in City of Phoenix that they have a whole toilet retrofit programs. Those work in Phoenix because they have lots of old homes. We don't. Our homes were built after the big plumbing code changes, and so we have much more efficient toilets. It wouldn't get us much of anything. So, that's just an example of how the context plays with what kind of things make a difference for us in conservation.
I'm going to bring this up right now, because we had it at one time when I was council, and all right, it's a widget, and I don't, you know me and widgets, I don't have a name for anything, but where it instantly heats the water. And we have done that in our house, because by the time it gets to the kitchen, I mean, we have to run it forever. And so, we've done that. There was an incentive program. It was back when I first got on council.
Dick Sousa.
Dick Sousa, yeah, absolutely right. And so, that, I don't know what the cost of that is, and I don't know the effect that it had. I know what the effect it had on Ron and I. We did it, and it was a big difference. So, you know, I would like at least that investigated into on how effective that is. And they, and I think now there's one that you can put it on the system outside, so it's not underneath the sink. When we started, you put it underneath the sink of where you want it. Now, it's actually on the water, the water heater. So, okay.
Water recirculation.
Yes, thank you. See, I knew you would have the right name for it. So.
Okay. So, we've also noted on there that we would confer and have the appropriate committee and staff members be present to talk about aspects of the context that were played to their staff area. Furthermore, once they've got their background in place, then we would review, ask them to review that water conservation plan, and look at suggestions with a focus on that outdoor water efficiency, because that's where the big low-hanging fruit are available. We're going to ask them to look at the recommendations they may make with an eye to their effect on all the stakeholders, one of the reasons to have them all represented on the committee, we hope, residents, growth and development, and thinking about the value portions of those impacts. What are they going to have as an impact on the quality of life, on the community setting here, so that we pick those that are going to have a positive effect, and we consider what those trade-offs would be. what those trade-offs would be. One of the trade-offs is always cost. For some types of conservation initiatives, there's not always a real positive dollar value, or even necessarily a big, huge water saving, but because they accomplish other things for value to the community, they demonstrate that the city's committed to water conservation, or they show the way for something that people can do that's going to still cost them some money, there can be worthwhile initiatives, and the committee might decide that some of those should be put forward. But they should definitely be looking at what is this return?
I'm going to suggest something, and I...
Okay.
Social media. There was a video that was put out, and it was by the mayor of Peoria, and it didn't have to do with this, but it had to do with voting. And she drew on a blockboard, and she did, it was kind of like, she was there, but it's sort of like a cartoon, but it told the story. So example, in your home, when somebody brushes their teeth, there's a cup there, and you fill the cup up instead of running the water. When you go to wash your hands in the sink, you don't keep... And something like that on our website that would be attractive enough, instead of just words like this, would be sort of acting it out. That voting one was so effective, and I, when I saw that. And so that kind of social media, I think, on our website would be something that people might enjoy watching and learn something from it.
There was Super Bowl commercial like that last night.
Yeah, there was, there was. Not that I liked.
When you're brushing your teeth, turn a flower. I saw that.
Oh, yes, Colgate, Kamala. They big nuts for that.
That's right. Okay. Go ahead.
And then the last goal that we were proposing be set for this group is that they come back then with their recommendations to council and staff for both outdoor water efficiency and demand management. And we distinguish those by talking about demand management for those who are not yet here, the 90% of the city we haven't built, don't have those people living here. So manage the way that they may be using water in the future. It's not a question of efficiency, because we're not trying to tighten up how much is used right now. Looking ahead and saying, how will we use it to best advantage in the future? Looking to have the committee make recommendations for the following five years as priorities for conservation.
Do we have anybody from the agriculture world on this?
We actually aren't serving agricultural water, so I hadn't considered that. If you want to look at that, it's possible.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, most of the agricultural water use in Goodyear we're anticipating will be going away and eventually converted to municipal use.
Yeah, does it, does it, does the education to people, I mean, the part that maybe it isn't a huge focus point, but the fact of the matter is, it is what it is, and they do use, and you do have a conversation out there, the farmer has it, and the people that want to take the well away have it. So it's kind of that same conversation, just putting it out, not just...
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I can understand that, and the fact that we have so long in years to develop our city, who's to say that there's not going to be some agriculture somewhere in the next 20 years, even for five years, and then it goes away for 10 years? You know, I mean, it's just, we've got such a long road ahead, that that's not to say there's not going to be agriculture somewhere, you know, sou- southerly in our, in our city. And so it's obviously going to be some, some top, point of topic, and I think that rather than leaving it out, you have it as part of the conversation, knowing that, because you don't know what's going to happen in 20 years. So it should always just be there, rather than, you know, 10 years from now, because it wasn't in the conversation, then all of a sudden, you know, some landowner bought a bunch of land that's going to do farming for a while. I just, I just think it's, it's better to be proactive, to think about it, and have them in the conversation, or at least address it, than not at all. I just think strategically that's better.
You could just, you know, we're just throwing out ideas here. You guys are the ones that are going to do this, but it could be just a speaker, because talking to many of the farmers here, I'm always astounded at really how scientific they are, and they care about water, too, because it's their livelihood. So maybe the education of a speaker, I don't know. It's just a suggestion, it's not, just think it over, don't...
No, I appreciate the comment. No, it's well-taken, because the irrigation districts have very strict water conservation guidelines set up by the state, especially if they're pumping groundwater. They have from laser-leveling fields to ensuring how much water per acre is being used. They have very strict guidelines, so you're right on, I'm right on target with that.
Yeah, and the people that are on this committee have not been on the water committee, and they don't know this information. Might be helpful.
Sherri?
When, I think it's your third slide with the little pie graph there. Do we have, kind of like a two-part question, do we have a goal that we're going to ask this committee to? How much can we reduce, single-family? Because you gave us, you know, that most people, you come with your audit, you say, "Well, we could reduce it 50," and it reduces 20. What's our goal, or what are we hoping to accomplish? And when we look at that outdoor, what is that, just, because irrigation's so broad, I know the grass takes up a lot more, you know, pools. Do we know what all that encompasses, or is it just not broken up in any way?
I could tell you a fair amount about that.
Oh, good.
We'll have to decide how far you want to go today, and how far you want to come to the Conservation Committee meeting to have further conversation about it. So when we're looking at the commercial irrigation side, a lot of that is the big turf you see in the greenways along our HOAs.
Okay. Okay, so that's not in the single-family?
That's not in the single-family.
Okay.
The single-family includes grass, too. In most of our service area, it's grass in the backyard. That's why you don't see too much in the front yard, but there are lots of homes where there's none at all.
And do we have a, why you say that, do we have a rule, like a Pebble Creek, we, you know, we, a little small patch for your dog, that's it? Otherwise, you do, you do pretend grass. And so there are rules under that. So what do we have in the city? Do we have a rule about how many square feet you can have of grass in a yard? I don't know.
No, but those are the kind, some of those kinds of things are things that could be considered in the landscape guidelines that we offer in our zoning ordinance for the future. Again, we're back to areas where we would expect the Conservation Committee will look in some depth and make some recommendations.
And just so no one hears that and gets scared, it would be for the future, so if someone has grass in their yard, we're not, the grass police is not going to be coming around.
No, I didn't say grass police.
I did mention, to your first question, the general plan looked at a 1% reduction going forward in time, so that was kind of, I think, a very, taking steps that are very simple and logical steps, 1% per year, and 5% in five years seems quite doable.
Okay. That is a goal. Any other? Go ahead.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. And one thing we need to take a look at on grass, so much of that is defined by that particular development. You know, one that comes to mind is Vanderbilt Farms. It absolutely requires you to have grass in the front. It's not an option if you want to live on those acre lots, so...
And I don't think we'd go, we wouldn't go that bad. We're not interested in that.
Probably not, but there are some, some developments that require...
But, you know, it's always easier to do at the new developments, when people are coming in, than it is to try to retrofit things and do so. I'm not against. Go ahead.
Well, I think we reached a summary we were anticipating presenting, so we're open to other questions you might have about, or recommendations you have for the committee.
Yes, Joanne?
So these proposed goals, you are still being open enough for the committee to come up with some goals of their own, too. I mean, this isn't just, these are goals and stick within these guidelines. I mean, you're allowing the committee to, to come up with some things themselves, correct?
We are anticipating they would come up with some of the, some initiatives they would like us to proceed with. We are proposing that we keep the fence a little bit closed around the idea of outdoor water efficiency. If you would like us to keep it more open, that's something we can look at.
No? I'm just trying to gauge how this is working and what we're...
There's going to be plenty there in the outdoor water efficiency for them to evaluate and to understand.
I think this council doesn't.
Really make a big difference.
I don't think we want to do that. We want to stay with the focus you're going on. This is what you're planning, and this is, I think we're fine with everybody. Molly?
I read your bylaws, and I'm assuming all of the requirements you have set up, one person doesn't have to be every single one of these, right?
No.
The way you've laid it out, he's got to be a registered voter, he's got to own land, he's got to do this, he's got to do that. So you're just taking, there's certain things that everybody has to be.
Right, the qualification.
They've all got to be 18 or older.
Right.
And then the rest is however you fit it in.
Right. We're looking to make sure we are diverse in getting those stakeholder representation, and that we're comprehensive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. This is great. Okay, I think that...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think that ends this, and it's almost 5:30, and we won't have the meeting until 6 o'clock, so I'm going to adjourn this, and the next meeting needs to start. We do have a public hearing tonight, so, meeting adjourned.